All right, we're all seated. Sorry for the short delay starting this evening. I'll go ahead and call this January 17th, 2017 meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Happy New Year to everyone. And I missed the first meeting, so I'll state that tonight. And we will start with our pledge of allegiance, and we will ask former councillor Freel to lead us this evening.
(inaudible) Thanks very much, Ryan. We'll move on to item three of our agenda, which is our communications from the public. Just a reminder, if you're here to comment on items that are advertised as a public hearing, now is not the time to comment. Please wait for those individual hearings to be called, but if you have anything you would like to bring to the council's attention, now is the time. And your name and address for the record, please. Mary.
Mary Flowers, Citizens for a Better Flathead, 35 Fourth Street West in Kalispell. And I'm -- there is an item later in your agenda where you're going to discuss the quarter funding, and I'm assuming this is appropriate time to speak to that issue?
Yes.
Okay. I did attend, and along with a lot of other folks, comment at the recent county planning board hearing and their discussion of the quarter plan that is being proposed by neighbors in that area. I think it's important for this council to understand that this is no longer a neighborhood proposed quarter, but the county has taken it on as their project. There's been no application fee. The county is moving this along independently. And so that changes the nature of it a little bit. I think if you saw today's or yesterday's paper, they have tabled the work to a workshop March 8th. They've asked Dave Grandprie, however, to look at narrowing the quarter and the proposed changes that they are considering. So that will be coming forward. But what I brought you tonight was a DVD of the meeting itself, which I think it's really important for you as council members to watch and to understand. I will also forward you, there were extensive written comments for the hearing, as well as our comments. But I think an important message that I left with, and in looking at what your comments were as well, there is going to be a real need for visual tools to help everyone really wrap their arms around what is being proposed in this quarter. One of the things that you recommended in your comments was a build-out analysis, looking at the commercial capacity. Build-out analysis can be done visually and as well, and I think it's really important that when you look at investing in a quarter study, that you have as many visual tools available as possible. So I'll give this to Michelle. I understand she doesn't have a way to copy it, but Dave can certainly get copies, more copies, from the planning office, and I would really hope that you circulate this and get a chance to listen to both sides of the public that spoke and to really understand kind of the emotional nature of the comments and the kind of tools that will be needed to find some common ground. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Is this something we could have posted to the city's website?
I think Jake and I will work on that to where we can get it onto the website.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Mary. Further public comment tonight? Mitchell?
Mitchell Drackman, 205 Foxhole Lane, Whitefish, Montana, 59937. One more comment that I had from, that I wanted to make at a little discussion before on the ADHOC committee for the climate change, was the fact that as a trustee on the library board, we just voted at the last meeting to improve the lighting. We're going to be changing out all the lights at the library. It's about a $10,000 project. We've gotten funding from outside sources, so it should be only costing us about $1,200 to do that, which we have the money and the budget for. That's going to be a major improvement for the energy efficiency and the electrical build-out that we have on a monthly basis. Be a tremendous improvement also on the actual lighting itself for the public coming in. We'll be looking at the future, the very near future of replacing the HVAC systems that we have there now, as a lot of the boilers and things of that nature are getting old, and that should be a big improvement also. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mitchell. That's great news indeed. Further comment tonight from the public? Not seeing any, I'll go ahead and close communications from the public, and we'll stay with the audience, any volunteer board reports from the audience. Board reports? How about the council? Not seeing any, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the January 3rd meeting minutes, or can I have a motion for approval? Frank?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by councillor Barbaris. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And that motion carries unanimously. We will move on to our first public hearing of the evening. We do have three. We'll start with item 6A, which is a consideration of an application from Ruiz Holdings LLC for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment at 1049 East Second Street. Good evening, Bailey.
Good evening. So as the mayor stated, this is a request for a conditional use permit in order to construct an accessory apartment at 1049 East Second Street. The property is zone WR2, which is our two-family residential district, and the Whitefish growth policy does designate the property as urban. Just as a note between the planning board and city council, previously the site was developed with a single-family residential building, but in between planning board and now, they actually tore it down. So the property is currently vacant at this time. So the accessory apartment would be located above a proposed two-car garage at the rear of the property. It would be approximately 23 feet wide by 26 feet long. It would be under our 600-square-foot threshold. It would be setback 15 feet from the rear property line and 11 feet from the eastern street-side property line, and it would access from an existing alley that's on the south side of the garage. The subject property is approximately 7,000 square feet, so it is over our minimum lot size for that district. It would connect to all municipal services. We did mail a notice to adjacent landowners within 150 feet of the property on November 18th, and we emailed advisory agencies and also placed a legal in the paper on November 23rd. I have had no written comments submitted at this time. And there's really no criteria that is, I mean, they pretty much meet every criteria. There's nothing very standout, but I'm happy to go into more criteria if you guys have a question. Otherwise, since you've read the staff report, we are recommending approval of the application. The planning board did hold a hearing on December 12th, and the draft minutes were attached as part of your packet. We did have one member of the public speak concerning about short-term rentals, which are not allowed in this zone. The Whitefish Planning Board did, and they did have a typo in my transmittal letter, they did vote six to zero, or six unanimously for approval. I forgot to write for approval in there. In making their decision, they did adopt the staff findings of fact and the conditions of approval. They did make three condition, or changes to staff's condition. Number one, they changed, rewrote condition number one, adding minor deviations from the plans require review pursuant to basically our standard condition. They just, I had an older staff report condition, and so they were using one of Wendy's conditions. And then the second one was they added a condition, "The parking in the garage shall only be used for parking and not for storage," and that was approved on a four-to-two vote. And then they added new condition number 10, which is that short-term rentals for less than 30 days shall not be permitted, and that was approved on a five-to-one vote as well. And then they renumbered the subsequent conditions. So I'm happy to go into further review of the criteria if you have questions, but again, it's a pretty standard conditional use permit for an accessory apartment.
Questions for Bailey? Frank?
Bailey, can you give me some background on what the concern was about parking in the garage shall be used only for parking and shall not be used for storage? What was the concern that was being expressed and trying to be addressed?
So we have noticed, and it's, I think it's just a standard, you know, something that happens, it's happening everywhere, but more and more people are using their garage for storage and less for parking. In this case, they do have, they were showing the required two spaces in the garage plus two spaces on the property. They had more than enough room for extra parking if it's required, but I believe, I mean, the concern is really they're just seeing more and more people that are using their garage for storing their boats and storing their stuff, and they want to make sure that if they are showing that that's to be used for parking, that they can meet their parking requirements. So that was mainly the concern.
Follow-up to that, Bailey? How would that be enforced?
That's a great question. Maybe Dave can offer.
Well, it's a condition of the conditional use permit, so if they violate the terms of that, we can either cite them or, in worst-case scenario, revoke their conditional use permit to use that as an accessory apartment.
Okay. Thanks. Further questions for planning staff? Thanks, Bailey. We did advertise for a public hearing on item 6A. We'll hold that public hearing now. Anyone wishing to provide comment or testimony, your name and record, or name and address for the record, please, when you approach the podium. Public comment? Go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Excuse me, Rhonda. I didn't see you, of course.
I was in the back. Sorry. Rhonda Fitzgerald, 412 Luffer Avenue. Good evening. I did attend the planning board hearing where this was first approved, or recommended for approval. And it seems to me that the accessory apartment idea has kind of lost its way a bit. It was originally initiated to help make things more affordable in the neighborhoods. I think Andy remembers that. The idea was that an owner-occupied property could build an accessory apartment, either as a guest apartment for relatives or friends, or to rent long-term to help with income, to help make a property more affordable. And we've seen a lot of them in town, and some of them are operated illegally as overnight rentals and so on, but what they haven't done is make those properties more affordable. They've made them more expensive because they drive up the price of the property because there's an income opportunity. And part of the deal is that that property is owner-occupied, or owner-occupied. And this particular property, at the time of the application, there was a house there, and it was not owner-occupied. The application was made by someone who had a California address. I brought that up, and the developer lives in California apparently, but the contractor spoke to it, and he said, "Well, that was a mistake because we were just looking to maximize the investment on this piece of property, and this seems like the best way to maximize the return." And I think that's so far from what you guys intended when you added accessory apartment as an allowed use in these neighborhoods, that I think I should bring it to your attention. It's not what it was meant to be. It's become something different, and we have this very valuable, very limited stock of modest-priced in-town properties, which our recent affordable housing needs assessment identified as what people want. They want a modest home with a small yard and a garage for storage. They can walk to downtown, and that's what we don't have enough of. And I think the trend here is to take more and more of that inventory out of that category by speculating with it. And I wanted to bring this up because this is not an owner-occupied property. I mean, this is an application for an accessory apartment. There isn't even a house there, let alone someone living in that house who wants to build an accessory apartment. Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda. Appreciate that. Dan?
Dan Graves, CEO, Whitefish Mountain Resort, and chamber board member representing the board tonight. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I'll rebut. I think it's interesting that a citizen is trying to convince the city council to be restrictive on somebody else's personal property, and I just urge you to be careful about that. How would you like it if somebody is telling you what to do on your house? They're staying within the limitations of the building codes and the planning, but because they don't want them improving and raising the price or the value of their property, you as the town council is thinking about restricting them? I just ask that you think about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Further public testimony on this item?
Troy Brist, Ruiz Holdings, 5514 Highway 2 West, Columbia Falls. I work for Mick. This property was purchased as an investment, and the intention is to pass this property along to his son. It is held in the holdings company for liability right now until we decide which form of building we're going to build on this property. We did some further investigation of the footings on the building and decided that it was, the footings were too poor to support the added addition. So we decided to demo the building and start from scratch. Our intention is to initially price out to see what it looks like to use the original plan that Mr. Therese made for us, using the same footprint, but new construction.
Okay. Thanks very much. Appreciate the comments. Further testimony? I'll try again, and I'll now go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion or a motion, please. Frank?
For purposes of further discussion and maybe amendment, I will move to approve the application of Ruiz Holding LLC for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment of 1049 East Second Street.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Motion has been seconded by councillor Williams. Frank?
Couple of questions for Dave or Bailey. The application here is for an accessory apartment for an owner-occupied facility. How do we, how do we manage that problem?
It's a deed restriction, so it's a requirement of the deed restriction that, and it does state that, that they have to have it recorded, and it is owner-occupied. If it's not, then it would be a violation of, be a zoning violation. But they do have to record the deed restriction prior to us signing off on the building permit. So it is required and to be recorded, that they, that is a requirement, so.
Okay. The second is, I'm having a little hard time with the finding here that the parking garage shall be used only for parking and shall not be used for storage. Is there, because I, quite frankly, garages are built, and even most of the time with the largest of vehicles, to the extent that they can fit in there, there's still room for storage. Is there a better way for us to phrase that, to effectuate the intent that the garage can use, can be used for storage only to the extent that it allows for use as a parking garage, for parking?
Mm-hmm. And that, you know, I mean, that was part of the concern, or part of the discussion, you know, Wendy, Dave and I had after it, is if they, you know, if they, we don't say that it has to be enclosed parking, it just, they have to provide two spaces on-site for the primary residence, one space for the accessory apartment. So if they choose to have it all uncovered and it's off the street, why are we to say that they can't store stuff in their garage? I know my garage is full of stuff, but I do, you know, but I have my parking off the street. So I get, I see your point. I don't know, I don't, unless Dave has a way, a better way of describing it, or just kind of what you said maybe is, to the extent that they can still park there, they can store stuff, as long as they can meet both. I don't have a great answer, unfortunately, for that, but I do see your point, so.
Dave, any follow-up?
Frank, if it's your intent to maintain that condition, you could change the wording to say that parking within the garage shall be reserved for vehicle parking, or something like that. Parking in the garage shall be used, yeah, reserved for the parking of vehicles, and just leave the storage aspect out of it.
Jen?
I want to move to strike condition number nine.
So that'll be an amendment to the original motion. I'll need a second to that effect, striking condition number nine.
A second.
Further discussion? Jen?
Just to quickly explain my reasoning, number three condition states that we have to have a required number of off-street parking spaces. So quite frankly, I don't care how they use the garage if they have three off-street parking spaces.
Katie?
One final question. Condition number 10, short-term rentals for less than 30 days shall not be permitted. Is that just redundant to state as it's not allowed already within the zoning code?
It's not allowed, not allowed at all. I mean, they could have it as month-to-month. That would be what's allowed, but it's short-term rentals, I mean, we wouldn't accept an application or sign off on a business license.
Would it change the regulation process if we were to find them was not following the code, or is, it would still be the same type of regulatory?
I don't believe so. It'd be still the same type of violation, so it's a zoning violation either way, so.
Further discussion on Jen's friendly amendment to the original motion, striking condition number nine? Frank?
I'd just add a couple of comments. Jen, I'm not too concerned about the idea that this, that the intent from the planning board and the hearing was that the facility be, that the garage, as it's built, be used for parking. I mean, I can understand the reason that the neighborhoods would like that and that we would appreciate that. My only concern was the idea that it shall not be used for storage. That bothered me. That was my only concern. I can't support, I would, given the, with the way this thing has come to us from the planning board, I would not support the idea of eliminating the requirement that the, that the garage be maintained to park vehicles, whether they use it for storage or not, is irrelevant, but that's my, would be my only thought. That's how I feel about it.
Further discussion on the amendment? Eddie?
I think I kind of understand what the planning board's rationale was. There's, you can show on a site plan that as being two of your parking spots, the garage spots, and get your building permit along with your other one spot on there, and then go ahead and fill the garage up with boxes, and then suddenly you really only have one off-street parking spot. So I suspect that's what the planning board was shooting for when they put condition number nine in there. So I guess maybe another way to look at that would be to go ahead and go back to number three and say, three off-street parking spots, two for the primary residence and one for the accessory dwelling unit should be maintained at all times.
Is that okay with the first?
For me?
And striking condition nine at the same time?
Yeah, strike condition nine and amend number three to state shall be designated and maintained for the accessory apartment in two off-street parking spaces. Shall be designated and maintained for the primary residence, yes.
That's okay with the second?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll vote on the amendment now. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And the motion passes on a four-to-one vote with councillor Sweeney voting in opposition, which brings us back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And that carries unanimously. Michelle? We will move on to item 6B, which I imagine is why many of you are attending this evening, which is a consideration of an application from Stream Lake LLC for a conditional use permit to locate a recreational guide and outfitting shop with a retail component at 669 Spokane Avenue, and this is on page 435 of your packet. Good evening, Wendy.
Good evening. So the request before you is a conditional use permit to operate a recreational guide and outfitter in the WB2. The applicant is proposing to locate at 669 Spokane Avenue. Access to the site is existing with two driveways on either side of the building, which will not be changed with this particular request. The applicant is using existing parking on the north and south sides of the building. They're adding new landscaping to bring the site up to current standards. They're proposing an interior remodel to serve the business, and they're also proposing to move, remove, and it's already underway, the west 12 feet of the awning added by the previous owner on the front of the building. A conditional use permit is required for recreational guide and outfitters in the WB2. The property is about a quarter of an acre, and again, at 669 Spokane Avenue. The property is developed with a vacant commercial building. It is surrounded by commercial uses and vacant pieces of property. Again, zone WB2. It has a growth policy designation of general commercial. It's served by all public services and facilities. We did notice adjacent landowners. Send a notice to advisory agencies, and a legal is placed in the pilot. We received email from, or a letter from a neighbor to the south that had some concerns about access. We also received, after planning board, a letter of support from the National Park Realty folks to the north, and also that they have a shared parking agreement with that. And since the packet went out, you also have, I think in front of you all, seven additional letters, six in support, and one identifying some concerns, which we could talk about So we review conditional use permits according to the criteria in the zoning regulations. The growth policy designates this area as general commercial, which the use does comply because it's on WB2. It complies with the growth, or the zoning regulations. The development is consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning. The building is existing. They aren't planning to make any changes to the structure. The west setback of the structure is less than three feet from the property line, but it's non-conforming and it can remain. The previous owner had obtained a right-of-way encroachment permit from MDT to construct that covered area out in front of the building, and again, they are proposing to remove some of it. The owner will need to work with MDT to kind of retain that area that is out in the right-of-way. The parking is existing, and it's located off an unimproved East 7th Street right-of-way. It's not an improved street. It's just the right-of-way itself. The business will require 11 parking spaces, and they're proposing 12. Under the newly adopted ordinance 1614, which I think was last fall, when you folks adopted that, places some limitations on recreational guide and outfitters in the WB2. It can't be more than 5,000 square feet. It can't be a formula business. No more than 30% can be devoted to retail, and there's no limitation on the number of boats or similar equipment stored or displayed. The footprint of the entire building is 1,970 square feet, so it meets that 5,000-square-foot threshold. 30% of this area is 656 square feet, and the applicant is proposing 591, and they are intending to displace some boats in front of the business under the covered awning. So all the standards are being met with this proposal. The site is suitable for the proposed use. Again, the parking is existing, located to the north and south of the structure. The layout is acceptable. The access to the parking to the south of the building is on the undeveloped right-of-way. This area has historically been used for vehicle maneuvering and will continue to be used for this purpose, until such time as the road is actually developed into the city street. This is acceptable to staff. The applicant can't store any snow within the right-of-way or to the east, therefore the public works department has requested a snow removal plan. Any new signage is required to obtain a sign permit. Again, water, sewer, storm, fire, police are all being served by the site. No traffic impact study was required because it was under the 200 threshold. Again, we do send this stuff to MDT, and we didn't receive any comments from them regarding Under neighborhood community compatibility, they are making no changes to the actual structure itself, so that'll remain the same. The existing neighborhood is highway commercial. This building has been part of that neighborhood since 1977. It's been a variety of non-residential uses, including the Dairy Queen and another restaurant recently, so the recreational guide and outfitter will be compatible with the neighborhood. The planning board held a public hearing on December 12th. Staff recommended approval, subject to eight conditions. The applicant did speak at this public hearing. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of the project, and in making their decision, they adopted the findings of fact and conditions of approval. They also added a new condition number eight, that a bike rack would be provided on-site. So just to hit some of the highlights of the conditions of approval, we do want the applicant to submit a snow removal plan to the public works department. We don't want any of the required parking spaces to be used for outdoor display or storage of boats or other equipment. All outdoor lighting needs to comply with our standards. The refuse location needs to be reviewed and approved by the public works department in North Valley Refuse, and a landscaping plan needs to be submitted to the planning department for review and approval. department for review and approval. One of the letters that you did receive that's in front of you that had some concerns and questions pointed out that there was, we called the access in, onto 7th Street a driveway. And yes, it is a right-of-way, but the driveway, it is designed and is functioning as a driveway, so that's why we identified it as a driveway. One of the other standards that was noted that was not being met was the requirement for new parking lots to have a landscaping buffer adjacent to streets. When we review kind of change of uses, a couple of standards that come into play that have kind of non-conforming sections include the landscaping chapter. So there's actual non-conforming section that says if you don't meet the standards and it's a change in use, you need to bring your landscaping up to current standards. Signage has a section. If you have a non-conforming sign and you're bringing in a new use, you have to bring your sign in to conformance. And then also, if your parking lot's not paved, there's a requirement for parking to be paved. There's a section in the parking chapter that talks about existing parking areas that were pre-existing to the zoning, so 1977 predates our 1982 zoning regulations. And I'm not sure when this particular standard came into place, but certainly was an existing structure with existing parking that's been in operation for about 40 years. The section goes on to say that we can't add new standards that would make the parking requirement go below what the required parking is. So by requiring a five-foot landscaping adjacent to a right-of-way, which is not a street, which is what the standard says, would require that parking minimum to go below what the minimum is. So, when we review those types of change in uses, we don't look at the layout of the parking unless there's some, you know, concern with safety. For example, the one you folks will remember, I think it was last fall, the 1840 Baker Avenue, where they had cars backing out onto Baker Avenue, and that was a real safety hazard. And so we had them, and part of it was actually in the Baker Avenue right-of-way. So as part of the condition, through the conditional use permit, you folks asked them to remove that parking area. But otherwise, there are so many different businesses around town, especially along Spokane Avenue and Highway 93 South, where they don't meet these particular setback in landscaping standards. But again, we allow them to change in use. Otherwise, we would have kind of unusable buildings throughout town. So, can I answer any questions for you?
Any questions for Wendy? Frank?
Wendy, on the parking that's off of the unimproved 7th Street, what happens to that if 7th Street and when 7th Street gets developed at some point?
You know, I think that would be probably up to the Public Works Department and the particular type of design that, you know, would be brought forward as to what would exactly happen on that site.
Yeah, I mean, that A-frame building that's next door, I believe that part of it's actually in the right-of-way. Those buildings have been there forever. I mean, this, you know, if we do improve that, we probably have to purchase one or both of those properties to make that happen or figure something out, but I'll let Public Works speak to that. But there's, I mean, that's just something that's been like that for 40-some years.
Yeah, I guess I can't necessarily speak to the A-frame property to the south, just because that one does apparently have an encroachment. As far as the Lake Stream Building, right now, their plan shows all of their parking on their property. Obviously, they're using that right-of-way for ingress egress, and we continue to, you know, permit that when we improve, that would be East 7th Street. My thought is that we'd work with the property owner at that time to come up with an ingress egress plan off of 7th that restricted the access, so that there's probably only one or two means to get on and off of East 7th at that point. But it's pretty far off in the future. There's some other factors that go into that 7th Street plan that MDT has talked about in the past that are variables in this as well. We understand that MDT wants to move forward with the next phase of Highway 93 from 13th to Second, at least in a conceptual kind of scoping phase this year, and so we may get some more information or have some participation in meetings on, in that portion of the project in the near future, but it's still a good ways off.
Well, I guess my only concern was, you know, Wendy did reference for us that the, we had a problem with a property on Baker that ended up had, was backing out onto Baker, causing all kinds of fits. I mean, I don't see any way, if 7th is ever improved, that that facility has any other option, given the setbacks that are currently there. They would, the parking necessarily would have to go in and out of and back onto 7th Street to get out of it. There's just no way, there's no other room there for them to create a turnaround on that, on that facility, I don't think.
Frank, I mean, it's possible that those could be converted to parallel spaces. I mean, there might not be as many, but they might have to lose one or two spaces.
Okay.
Currently, they're out, they're exceeding their parking requirement, and they're also leasing spaces next door, so something, at that time, I'm sure something could be worked out, but.
Okay.
They would at least have a couple spaces there as parallel spaces.
I just want us to look at this thing with our eyes wide open. Thank you.
Further questions for planning staff? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on item 6B, and we'll hold that public hearing now. I would ask Justin to approach the podium, name and address, please, as the applicant on this proposal.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, hello. I'm Justin Lawrence, citizen, taxpayer, and downtown business owner of Lake Stream Fly Shop at 334 Central Avenue. Thank you for your time throughout this year-long quest to move Lake Stream to its new home. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the Lake Stream family to request a conditional use permit to operate Lake Stream Fly Shop, a guide and outfitting-based business at 669 Spokane Avenue in the WB2 zone. We've been at this since February of 2016. We've worked extremely hard and have spent countless hours and quite a few dollars to create a CUP application and plan that appeases all concerns from the city and the public. Lake Stream, a 30-year business in this town, has found its next 30-year home at 669 Spokane Avenue. This vacant property fits the mold for Lake Stream's future growth and gives this successful, locally-born business a sense of place in this great community. We fully intend to abide by all conditions set forth in this CUP at this location and hope that we can contribute to the positive growth and spruce up that this neighborhood needs. We look forward to being at the front doorstep to downtown Whitefish, and will strive to help our great mountain town shine for many years to come. Thanks to all you and the city government who have put up with my many phone calls, visits, and dumb questions. I've learned a lot throughout this process, and the services that were provided to me as a citizen in this town were and are invaluable. I'm here to answer any and all questions about this.
Thanks, Justin. One thing I've learned in 12 years, there's no such thing as a dumb question.
Right on. Thanks.
Stick around, there may be some questions from the council. Further public comment tonight on this item? Jeff?
Jeff Raper. I live at 719 Kalispell Avenue here in Whitefish, also the business owner of National Parks Realty at 601 Spokane Avenue. You have an email from me, which is sufficient to let you know that we've worked out an arrangement for additional parking as needed if they have, you know, overfloor concerns. As it is, we've got more than enough parking to house every single one of our agents, all our administrative staff, guests, where we still have parking left over. So it's not going to be a problem for us. We're looking forward to actually having them as neighbors. We're looking forward to having that empty building filled and occupied, and encourage you guys to vote yes. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Further public comment tonight? Mary?
Good evening again. Mary Flowers, speaking for Citizens for Bear Flathead, 35 Fourth Street West in Kalispell. And first, just a word of correction on the written comments that I just handed out to you. I had computer nightmare's all day today with problems with my, this, these comments in particular, and so I've recovered them and been unable to make all the, install part of it that has been lost. So any inconsistency in this, I apologize for. In particular, the second paragraph there, "You will not find attached revised, recommended findings and conditions" because those are somewhere out in cyberspace. But I do want to go ahead and walk you through some of the comments that we do have. And they will focus around three points that I think, what we are asking is that you look at the CUP application and site plan and the applicable standards to make sure that the standards are being met. I appreciate that the applicant has indicated that that is their intent and, but I think, particularly in the context of the hearing that I spoke of earlier, you have a whole series of folks with conditional use permits along the highway south of 40 that are looking to have additional development rights on those properties. And I think it's really important, in light of the standards for our highways, that you're consistent in kind of the standards that you require and apply. So that's context for these comments. A key decision that you must make this evening is if the proposed CUP meets the current parking landscaping and landscaping standards, or if, under the historical use of the site, the new use does not have to meet the current standards. I want to talk you through a series of city standards that I will argue require you to enforce the compliance with current landscaping setback and parking requirements. So you heard from Wendy that they believe that essentially the use of 7th Street Avenue has been grandfathered in. So I would point out that the burden of proof for ensuring that is on the applicant. The proposed CUP does not meet the definition of non-conforming use, and thus the continued encroachment on the city-owned 7th Street right-of-way and the proposed parking and access plan as proposed, we argue that do not meet the, currently, the WB2 zoning district. And while the building itself and its front setback may not be conforming, we would argue that the rest of the site should conform. We've given you the definition there of non-conforming use out of your code, and we would note that this use being proposed is not non-conforming because it is an authorized use within the district. As an authorized use, though, it needs to meet city standards. And I would point you in particular to the citations on encroachments. Under 721 encroachment standards, existing encroachments, "An encroachment existing as of the date of this adoption shall not be considered legal. Instead, any encroachment existing as of the date of the adoption of this section shall be considered in violation of this section until a permit authorizing such an encroachment is granted." The burden of proof, again, relies on the applicant. The hearing record before you does not show that there is any encroachment permit. It is not in the interest of the city or the taxpayers of the city to issue an encroachment permit, which by the city statute is only temporary, as the applicant must demonstrate that they can meet the parking and landscape requirements of the conforming use and the CUP that they have applied for in a W2 zone now. If they don't meet it now, how will they meet it in the future? And that was the question that was just asked here, and I don't think that we got a sufficient answer. So, because there is no encroachment permit, the existing use, we argue, must meet the current standards. And also, under the city statutes, and Wendy mentioned this, landscaping must also, when there's a change of use, meet the current standards. And again, under the city statutes, parking space, and this is 116-1, general requirements, I'm on page three, kind of skipping a little bit here to keep going, but, again, within that, I've highlighted that the parking standards are required to be met, except that an established use lawfully existing at the effective date of this title need not provide parking or roadway as herein set forth. However, because there is not an encroachment permit, it is not a lawfully existing use of the 7th Street access or right-of-way. Because of these concerns with the encroachment on 7th Street, I think it's enough to ask you to table this application tonight and to really have the staff and the applicant work together to address the parking, so that we have a long-term solution to meet the landscaping and parking standards for this application before you. And again, because if they need to comply with the parking landscaping and access requirements of the statutes, the site plan and the findings before you are not sufficient to move forward, which would again require tabling it so that it can be reviewed, site and plan can be updated, the staff report and findings can be redone, and we will argue that the conditions also need to be amended. I know that's a lot. I hope you're, you will give your city attorney an opportunity to look at this, but I think it is merits taking the time to do this right. And I, too, look forward to this business being an asset to the community, and I think we need to work with it to find ways to address these concerns. My second point on top of page four is that the CUP application and site map is incomplete and deficient in a number of ways, given the apparent reliance on the assumption that some standards did not need to be met. But there are other issues as well. One that got left out in my attempt to recreate these is that a site plan, under your statutes, are required to be part of this application, and it was not. And this is particularly important, given the fact that this business is going to be doing, I assume, although it's not part of the application, clearly stated that there would be, how outside displays will be handled, but a site plan might help to shed more light on this, or a sign plan, and it is required to be part of the CUP. The CUP calls for off-site parking to meet part of its goals, and yet the WB2 district does not allow for off-site parking, and I've cited the districts in your zoning that do allow for commercial off-site parking to be allowed. There are setbacks, and Wendy mentioned the five-foot. There's also a 20-foot setback, both on the west, southern border and the eastern border, that are not currently met within the site plan. So while there's a need for the site map and the CUP application to be in compliance with these aforementioned city standards, is enough justification to table this request. The staff report and findings also need to be updated. And I've provided you here a series of standards that should be provided you here a series of standards that should be included in that update. But again, in my computer glitches, I did not get them all included. And then on my third point, the standards and associated conditions for outdoors displays and storage have not been adequately considered. In the text amendment and in my understanding of your decision to make this a conditional use permit, one of the things that you wanted to be sure is that you had standards in place for outdoor display. While outdoor display and storage is allowed within this CUP and use, there aren't currently standards. And so I have provided samples standards from other community, from another community, just to remind you that I think it's appropriate also to have a condition that requires and that identifies standards for outdoor display and storage. The site plan does not show any outdoor storage or display. And if the intent of the applicant is to have absolutely no outdoor display or storage, then that needs to be made clear in the application. So without dragging you through more of that, I do hope that you will read more of the detail and give some serious consideration to working with the applicant and your planning staff to take this back, to table it. And I'm not sure how that is impacted by the 90-day time limit. I understand we're here tonight under a suspension of that. I'm hoping that can be continued and that you can look at this with more of a fine tooth comb. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Further public testimony on this item?
Good evening again, Rhonda Fitzgerald. It's absolutely in the best interests of the community that we have a big vision about especially our circulation, our transportation plan. And to be short-sighted about projects that might come forward relatively quickly or not, that are imperative to develop, we have no east-west corridors in our community. We have no ways to cross. And we've been relying on the highway department when they do the urban corridor to solve that for us in some way by providing a connector between Spokane and Baker. And the 2010 corridor study identifies a Seventh Street Bridge from Spokane to Baker as the preferred alternative and a 13th Street connector as the Plan B. If the Seventh Street Bridge were built, that has always been the preference of the Public Works Department because it opens up the possibility of having a true east-west connector-collector street across the entire community. Going out east on 13th is problematic because of Cow Creek, which I think just a few months ago you guys looked at in a meeting. So the possibility of the highway department connecting Seventh to the west exists. The possibility of the city connecting Seventh Street to the east is a real probability. It's only one block. And that Seventh Street right-of-way is currently used as a street by many of the businesses south of it. They go in on the Seventh Street right-of-way like a street to the alley, and then they access the backs of their businesses all the way down that block. And if you drive down that alley, you'll see that they're all, they have a lot of parking back there and customer parking and, you know, they're operating like Seventh Street is a street. And so I think it's really important to recognize that this is not a, no one's ever going to use that as a street. And the photograph shows that in fact, there is no existing driveway off Spokane on the south side. That's the Seventh Street right-of-way. The property is only 22 feet wide. So you can either have a driveway there, which I believe when it was the Dairy Queen, I used to drive in there to drive around to the takeout window. It was a driveway. And then later someone did add some parking there, but it stopped being a driveway then because it's only 22 and 1/2 feet wide. You can either have a driveway or you can have parking. To David's point, perhaps you could have parallel parking and a five-foot landscape and a driveway, maybe. And what I'm hoping is that you will suggest to the applicant that they go back and look at that property and see if they can't configure their parking slightly differently. Maybe some parallel parking on that south side, maybe some more parking in the back. The lot is actually pretty deep, although it slopes down and would need some work. But there is another way to configure the parking to still accommodate the requirement without interfering with the city's ability to really do good planning. And I hope that you guys will think about that. And I certainly hope that the project scope would be corrected so that it doesn't say that there are existing driveways off Spokane, because there aren't. There's one existing driveway. And the other access is the city's right-of-way, which would be incredibly dangerous, people pulling in and backing out, just like the Baker situation. It would be much better if at this time, that property was redeveloped to identify, you know, put in a landscape five-foot or curb or something and access the property from further down Seventh Street. Because it would be safer, it would be a good long-term solution. Down the road, you wouldn't have to come back and disrupt business in operation. And I think all in all, it would be better for everyone. And I hope that you will consider that. The other thing I would like to mention is that one of the reasons for adding this use in the B2 is because of all of the truck-driftboat rigs that you had a picture of scattered all over Central Avenue. And I don't see any parking for a truck-driftboat rig on this site plan, which worries me. Because I think your Seventh Street right-of-way might turn into a big truck-driftboat rig parking lot. Because who's to say what that is? The planning department thought it was a driveway. Thank you.
I've listened to all this consternation about Seventh. Mike Jensen, 919 Dakota Avenue, Whitefish. I've listened to all this consternation about Seventh. No one has ever questioned that we were going to build Seventh someday. And I anticipate it still will be built. And I've heard the planning office say that he's met the parking requirements even without Seventh. I don't understand what's going on. You call this a driveway, it's right-of-way. Yes, it's right-of-way. He's not encroaching on anybody. He's using part of the city right-of-way to park on today, but it's because no one else is using it. He isn't contesting that Seventh is going to be built someday. He's made provisions for that with his neighbor. Should he need more parking, you heard him say it. He has it. Who says that he can't use Seventh Street to access his property with a driveway later on? That's already been established. This isn't like they're going to cut him off with no access. The city, I anticipate, will build Seventh. But all of this noise about encroaching on Seventh and using Seventh as a driveway is nonsense. He's using it as it's historically been used and never once contested that it will be built at some point. I support the use of this driveway for the proposed use. Please see fit to pass it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Further public testimony this evening? Further public comments? Go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion or a motion. Who'd like to start? Andy?
I would move that we approve WCUP 16-09, findings of fact, staff report, and nine conditions of approval as recommended by the Whitefish Planning Board.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion was seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? Jen?
I have a couple of questions. The property directly to the south, which is slated to be Seventh Street right-of-way, is that owned by the city or someone else?
It's owned by a lady from Big Fork, I believe. That and the building next door where the jewelry store and the apartments are.
So the required parking spaces, there's nothing in our requirements about making sure that there's legal access to that property? Or is there legal access?
The adjacent property?
Yes.
Well, they use that right-of-way for access, and they use that right-of-way for existing parking. They have for 40 years. So there's cars that park along there that use those businesses that park within that right-of-way.
Considering that this conditional use permit is for a particular kind of business use, which inherently also requires trailers, not requires, but would attract drivers with trailers, I don't, I mean, there's not a requirement that we provide trailer parking for that type of business use, is there?
Justin may want to explain what his plan is for his guides that come there with driftboats. I don't know.
That's helpful, but I don't think that, you know, if it's not a requirement, it's not a requirement, just like it's not a requirement that we consider whether or not he's got an off-site parking agreement either. It doesn't carry with the property, so it shouldn't be a finding of the conditional use permit. Is there an encroachment currently with the property on the Seventh Street?
There's no physical encroachment on the Seventh Street from that property. They use that as an access to their parking and to their business.
And the site plan as presented does not encroach on that?
Yeah, you look at the site plan, it shows, I mean, the parking spaces go right to the edge of the property line.
Great. Okay, those are my questions.
Further questions, comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like, sign, and the motion does carry unanimously. Thanks, guys.
We're going to go ahead and move on to what will be item 6C on our agenda, which will be our first ordinance, first reading of our first ordinance of the year. That'll be ordinance 17-1, an ordinance rezoning approximately 1.02 acres of land located at 2088 Houston Drive, Flathead County, Montana, from County R1, which is their suburban residential district, to Whitefish WSR, which is our own suburban residential district, and adopting findings with respect to such rezone.
So as the mayor stated, this is a request from the city of Whitefish to rezone one parcel from County R1 to City WSR. The property, as the mayor said, it's at 2088 Houston Drive. The property is approximately 1.02 acres. The purpose of rezoning the property is due to the adoption of Resolution 1658, which did annex the property into Whitefish city limits on November 7, 2016. Since it's now within the city limits, we have to rezone it from a county zone to a city designation. There is a comparison between the County R1 and the City WSR zoning. It's on page 475 of your packet if you wanted to see the differences between the two. The property is currently vacant. The growth policy does identify this parcel as suburban residential, which does correspond to the WSR zoning. We did mail a notice to adjacent landowners within 150 feet of the parcel on November 18. We notified, or excuse me, advisory agencies were notified, as well as the legal published in the Whitefish pilot. I had no written comments received at the time of my staff report, but we did have some comments received at the planning board, and I'll discuss that here in a minute. They would be connected to city services. And we did review the request in accordance with our zoning regulations and the statutory criteria for rezones. I can get into more of that further if you want to. I know we've been seeing a lot of these, so I'm trying to keep it brief. Staff is recommending approval of the rezone. The planning board did meet on December 12 and considered the request. We did have, as I stated, one member of the public spoke and submitted some written comments. Those were attached to your packet. And the main question was if the property actually was annexed. And it was, in fact, annexed on November 7. So the draft minutes were also attached as part of your packet from the planning board. And the planning board did unanimously recommend approval of the rezone and adopted findings of fact. And I can go into more questions or detail of the criteria if you would like me to.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey? Not seeing any right now. We did advertise for a public hearing on ordinance 17-1, and we'll hold that public hearing now. Any testimony? Just for the record, your name and address, please. Ben.
Good evening, Mayor Mollfeld, councilors. Chuck Sterns, who's leaving us soon. Hi, Chuck.
Name and address, please.
Ben Cavan, 2130 Houston Drive, which was formerly in the Donut and is now under threat of annexation for some time now. My neighborhood is in litigation with the city. It's before the Montana Supreme Court right now. And included is, I'm in Houston Lake Shore, and then there are Stocking B and C, and then there's five other independent parcels is the neighborhood. I see you have a nice map over there. Lot 15 that you're proposing to annex is in the Houston Lake Shore track, which I can see that right up there, I believe. The yellow one, yeah, which is the track that I live in. There's an error in what Bailey had to say. She said it was vacant. There's a house there, a garage. So I don't know what you do about errors, but if you drive down there and look at it, it has a house and a garage on it. Lot 15 was an original member of our lawsuit against the city opposing annexation. And our attorney, Bruce Fredrickson, didn't get any notice that you were annexing Lot 15. And his letter is in the packet, I believe. So our contention then is that...
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order.
Go ahead.
Ben, we're not actually annexing this property. We're, it's a zone change request.
I understand. What's in the packet is, our attorney did not think it had been annexed since it was part of the litigation. He thought he would have been notified, was the objection. And he was not notified, so he didn't believe it had happened. And you could say I was asleep at the switch or something, because I didn't know it either. Anyway, our contention then is that this annexation was not done properly and should be rescinded by you folks. A second point is that it's totally surrounded by county zoning. And so why not wait till the litigation is complete before you go change the zoning? And then another point that I have is that, looking in the packet, I did not see any indication about the litigation. It seems to me that that makes it a little unfair to you people if you don't know what's going on. And therefore, it seems to me this should be continued. Thank you. Oh, any questions?
Oh, any questions? Thank you, Ben, for the comments. Further public testimony on this item? Go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion, please. Frank?
I will move to approve ordinance 1701, an ordinance rezoning approximately 1.02 acres of land located at 2088 Houston Drive in Section 23 Township 31, North Range 22 West, Flathead County, from R1, County R1 Suburban Residential District to Whitefish WSR Suburban Residential District, and adopting findings of fact with respect to such reason.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Franzen. Comments on the motion, Frank?
Nope.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that passes unanimously, Michelle. We will move on to item 7, which is communications from our planning and building director. We have one item regarding options to begin work on a Highway 93 South corridor plan, and you have Dave's memo attached. I think we'll start with an overview from our planning director and then go from there.
So back in December, you guys asked us to put together a scope of work and a timeline if we were to initiate a Highway 93 South corridor plan, and it was identified in our growth policy as a major concern. We put that off mostly because of issues with the Whitefish Donut and the extraterritorial planning jurisdiction. City Whitefish did send several letters to the county commissioners during that time asking them to participate in the plan, and they were not willing to. So we put that off and went forward with a Highway 93 West plan, which costs about $56,000, and a Wisconsin Avenue corridor plan, which has a $50,000 budget, and we're currently developing that right now. It's about a third of the way through that process. So with this particular plan, there's three basic neighborhoods or sections that we'd have to look at kind of individually. The neighborhood commercial stretch, which is East Sixth Street to about the Whitefish River culvert near 13th, and then the highway commercial strip, which goes out to Highway 40, and then there's the section that's outside of our jurisdiction that goes from Highway 40 South. It's currently the, getting reviewed by Flathead County for some zoning changes and a quote-unquote corridor plan that really isn't a plan, it's more of a zoning designation. And so that area is definitely under scrutiny right now. I did talk to the county planning board about our willingness to possibly participate with them if we were to move forward with the plan. They didn't seem overly inclined to want to wait for us to do that, but still on the table, as far as I know. They want more information from us on the timeline and such. As far as the financial considerations, starting such a plan was not budgeted this year. We're intending to spend the year working on the Wisconsin Avenue plan, which we have in our budget, so any extra money for that plan would have to be found. Chuck can probably speak to that aspect more than I can. I did talk to Dana about that, and she thought possibly that there might have been some money in the TIF funds left over from the contingency for the parking structure. Of course, we won't know what that's going to be till that's done, so there are some issues with that. But if we did get to go on with the plan, we'd have to advertise for a consultant, thinking that probably by sometime in March, we'd have that all squared away with a consultant wrapped up, and then be able to start the plan as soon as they could, which, you know, by April probably. And based on our other plans, it generally takes about 12 months to possibly 18 months to do, depending on how controversial it is. We do have some money in there. If we only wanted to start in one section of it, for instance, the portion south of Highway 40, and do it in phases, that's a possibility too. But anyway, I laid all of that stuff for you. Be glad to answer any additional questions if I can, and Chuck's available to answer financial questions, so.
Chuck, can you go ahead and address the financial aspect of this?
Sure. There's several aspects to consider. I've got the map of the proposed corridor plan up on the screen. Before I do that, I mean, I had suggested to Dave, and I think it's obviously for the council, to determine, you know, whether you wanted to go south of Highway 40 or not. If the county doesn't participate in, like, a combined corridor plan, it seems hard that we would plan outside our jurisdiction when they have a concurrent planning process, corridor plan process going on their property in the corridor. But, you know, that's up to you folks to, you know, determine if that's the best use of your funds to go outside the city in an area that you no longer have control over. But looking at the map up on the screen, you'll notice probably even less than half of the district is in the tax increment, which is the yellow hatched portion. However, the entire road of Highway 93 is within the tax increment district. So first of all, from a tax increment perspective, you can only spend tax increment funds outside the boundaries of the district when it's really implicitly connected to the tax increment district and the goals and objectives of the tax increment district. And usually, that's for ancillary types of things, like, so Maynan, we posed the question on the Highway 93 West or North corridor, could we use tax increment funds to extend the historic streetlights all the way out to State Park along the route? Because it would be incongruous, you know, maybe not to have the same types of streetlights all along the whole corridor. In that case, she determined that that, you know, really would be a legal use of tax increment, even though it was outside the district boundaries, because it was so implicitly tied to the tax increment district and what we were trying to accomplish. Here, I think it's a little less certain. Certainly, anything along the road is in the district. You might be able to say, well, one property deep on each side of the highway, since that is in the district, might be connected, but I don't know. I think it'd be hard to go more than one property deep along each side of the highway. Having said all that, I think basically what you'd need to commit to would be partial funding from tax increment, maybe again, like we did on Highway 93 West corridor plan study of 50/50. That seems to be about right, given the highway goes the whole length and then the property that would be in it. Again, if you go south of Highway 40 out into the county area, and even some of the county areas north of Highway 40 as well, then the percentage in the TIF, you know, might change. It kind of just depends on the scope of your planning boundaries that you would do. Then if we also look at, I had Dana, oops, there we go, update the tax increment pro forma spreadsheet just for some known conditions. We hadn't done one for a number of months, and that's on page 506 of your packet. Obviously, it's hard to see up on the screens at this level. You may be able to zoom in, and I can zoom in on some particular parts, because, again, if we just go to the bottom, oops, sorry about that. Now I better... Dropped on in the annexations, let me get there again, sorry about that. Page 506 of the packet, if we enlarge it a little bit and go to the bottom line. So in this column, which, if I go back up, I can tell you what column number that is, column letter. Column C are sort of projects that have never yet been budgeted in the tax increment, so they're a little bit outliers. They're not included in the bottom line figures. Sorry, I'm going to have to... Column M is your potential next year's budget for the tax increment, FY 218. And if you look at line 89, at the end of FY 18, you might have $655,000 left, and that's pretty good. You know, certainly, if you did $50,000 for a Highway 93 South corridor plan, that's not going to threaten the financial condition of the tax increment. I think what you also have to then look at are other unbudgeted priorities or possible projects that are shown in, I think it's column C, as I said. Yeah, column C. And just depend, you know, start deciding. I mean, if you do some money for a Highway 93 South corridor plan, it's, maybe doesn't jeopardize some of these other projects, but you start to chip away at the viability of the other projects. So in the future, you'll have to decide between Central Avenue, between Third and Fourth Reconstruction. So far, we've heard that's a pretty high priority of the council, and that's $300,000. So we're kind of, I know Craig's pretty much assuming you're going to be good for that in FY 18, because we're starting to engineer and design it. So he's really hoping that next year, you'll be willing to budget $300,000 of TIF for that one block of work. The widening of the Baker Viaduct using, you know, widening the Jersey barriers, that's probably a pretty good cost estimate. Craig had suggested we could use urban funds, urban highway funds for that instead of tax increment. The more you do out of urban highway funds, the longer you go on doing any other improvements to Wisconsin or Baker Avenue. So again, that's a little bit of a trade-off. If you, you can use urban highway funds for that project, because it's on the highway, but, you know, it's not really getting you turn lanes on Wisconsin, which used to be a pretty high priority, getting a turn lane at Skiles and a turn lane at Reservoir Road. And the last time we, they paved Wisconsin, there wasn't money in the urban funds to put in those intersection, or those turn lanes. Baker Avenue Viaduct Pedestrian Underpass, that's probably an $800,000 project to put a bike and pedestrian underpass under the south end of the Baker Viaduct, so that you could go, say, from Depot Park and the O'Shaughnessy Center over to the existing trail west of Baker and avoid some of the problems with the Atgrade Crossing, which there is no crossing at Railway and Baker, but you obviously see many people trying to cross there all the time. So that project, we're hoping to apply for a $400,000 grant from Transportation Alternatives. Originally, that discussion was going to be in your packet tonight, so you would have had a better awareness and understanding of the scope of that project. The Chamber 96,000 Housing Authority, no, I'm not sure what Dana was putting that. I think a lot of that's already been spent on the housing study. And then Depot Park Snow Lot, that's Phase 5 of the Depot Park, and that's kind of been withheld by the council in their earlier adoption of the Depot Park master plan, saying we may or may not ever do that, so let's hold it out. Long-winded explanation for some choices coming up, but I wanted you to see sort of the full scope of some of those choices. You can't in columns M and N do everything on there. This last column down in column O in 2020, you obviously have more financial capability to get some things done, so some of these projects, you know, may be able to be delayed, but a lot of them are coming up, so there might be some financial choices of the council. Having said that, if you wanted to commit, say, $50,000 of TIF in order to get the Highway 93 South corridor plan going, I think you can. You may just, you know, hinder some choices later on, and then you'd have to deal with the aspect that not all of the land to be planned is in the tax increment, and so you'd probably have to be willing to put in some general fund money in the next budget as well.
Thanks, Chuck. John?
Didn't we carry over from last year, remaining TIF funds from the buy local campaign that were unused?
Yes. Sorry? Yeah, and she, oops, I'm sorry. That was a pretty modest amount, I'm thinking it might have been 20,000 to 40,000, Andy might remember better, but it was fairly...
It was 20.
20? So it was a pretty modest amount, and she probably took that into account. It's line 64, and let's see what this shows. Oh, the budget looked to be 30,000, but again, yeah, most of that, maybe all of it was unspent. I think we, well, we did do a little consulting contract with Brian Schott to do some things, so some of that would have been spent, so maybe there'd be 20,000 left. Yeah, she probably kind of took that into account in her cash balance calculations, though.
Chuck, I think the other budgeted item I know that we're not probably going to spend this year is, I believe we allocated 20,000 or 25,000 out of the street fund towards the Birch Point Quiet Zone. And while I'd like to see that reprogrammed for next year or the next fiscal year, is that money available, and is it an appropriate use of funds for a corridor study?
Well, and Dave can address some of this. I think he said that, well, we know that the transportation was going to be a big part of the Wisconsin corridor plan. Presume, I mean, I'll let Dave address it, to clarify how much of transportation is going to be part of this Highway 93 corridor. I mean, the state pretty much planned and designed Highway 93 South to accommodate all the growth that was going to happen. We've got that access study issue. I'd say, you know, any city contribution towards that access study probably would be a little bit more relevant than a corridor plan, but I'd say legally, you could commit some street funds to the transportation element of a corridor plan. I'm not sure how well that can be broken out, and, you know, that might be less than 10% of the study, I don't know. Conceivably, you could.
Yeah, and I think, you know, part of that budget for the plan will be for engineering services. We're going to have to need, do some transportation planning, look at, you know, some of the existing frontage roads, you know, or Baker. You know, we've been continuing to develop that, or people have been developing that, but there's some issues with, you know, where it comes into, what's the name of that road that comes down from Don Spivey's development? Can't think of the name of that one, but...
Park Knoll.
Park Knoll. And then we have some of the issues with where JP Road Intersection is, and the possibility to extend that potentially up to Carrow Avenue at some point, as well as tie it back into Whitefish Avenue. So some of those things could be looked at within the main part of the corridor. I mean, obviously, if we expand south of Highway 40, you know, we would want to do some transportation planning for some future frontage roads on those properties, or to locate them, if we can get MDT and the county to coordinate with us on the plan, but it's going to be really dependent on, you know, having that coordination.
John?
I think I'd like to see us move forward. We have 30,000, it looks like, based off of the city budget, allocated currently in TIF for the buy local campaign that we could reallocate to this project, given the nature of the buy local campaign and its status right now. But as far as addition, or allocating additional funds into the TIF budget for FY 17, I'm not sure that we necessarily need to put the project on quite such a fast track, but I, you know, I'm all ears if other councilors want to consider that. But 30,000 from the current FY 17 budget from TIF funds to be allocated towards this 93 South plan.
John, something to consider is that, you know, most of this plan will probably end up happening, you know, after the next fiscal year starts in June. I mean, we could initiate the plan with a certain amount of funding, and then, of course, we'd have to have the money available for the next fiscal year to, in the next upcoming budget, to finish it up. budget, to finish it off.
Right. Yeah, Chuck, I think there was twenty-five thousand in the street fund for 2017 budgeted.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest issue for the council is deciding, if you want to, Dave can start an RFP, and he's got the draft scope of services in the packet, so that can be started. And like, like he said, by the time you go through the selection process, hiring, get a contract, the fiscal year may be pretty close to being over, and so, most of it would be in the next year. I think the biggest issue is if you, say, had only fifty percent out of TIF and fifty percent out of, say, the general fund, or John was thinking twenty-five percent out of the street fund and twenty-five percent out of the general fund, you know, you're starting to make assumptions for the general fund next year without looking at all the potential requests that are going to come in. That's the timing of this. This, if this is a priority of the council, you just say, "Do it, and we'll raise taxes if we have to." But, you know, you always can cut other places, too, so. But I do think there will be some additional requests from departments this year, given that the tax base may grow more than the last couple of years because we have a two-year reappraisal.
I guess when I, when I look at this, the real impetus for kind of trying to fast-track a 93 South plan, and I hesitate to even say fast-track because it's been on our radar for, you know, since we, you know, revamped our growth policy back in 2007. So, I'm talking ten years now, but really, while we're talking about this tonight is because of the, you know, recent action of the landowners and residents south of Highway 40 outside of our planning jurisdiction. And I guess what I'm hearing is we've got broad support to move something forward, what that looks like this year versus next year. We can probably figure that out, you know, as part of the next budget cycle, but it sounds as though we have adequate funding in place to at least get the plan started. I think the bigger question is to, whether or not to include the area south of Highway 40. And I guess before we decide that as a group, I would like to extend an invitation to, you know, get together with the county commissioners again and ask if they would be interested in partnering with the city on that aspect of the plan that could then become a component of our plan specific to city limits. I ironically was meeting with Mark Massmussen, the new Flathead County Planner, for my business-related things, and he indicated that they are interested in cooperative planning for the corridor. And I guess I would like to see the council draft a letter, and I'm happy to deliver that letter and meet with the commissioners in person, but indicating our interest in pursuing the city corridor plan for our section of Highway 93 South, but certainly our interest in, you know, partnering with the county on the segment south of Highway 40 within the county's jurisdiction. So, I'd like to see that as a starting point. We can state our commitment financially for the city portion and kind of see where the discussion takes us, but I think it's certainly worthwhile to make one additional effort along those lines. If I would have the support of the council, we can draft a letter and see where it goes.
Frank?
John, I like the idea. I think that's something we need to do. I, again, this is an area that we promised ourselves we were going to do a corridor plan on for so many years. I, you know, I think it, you know, if we'd have had this corridor plan or done it four years ago or five years ago when we first started really discussing when we were going to get to do this thing, I think we might be in a better position to have more comfortable conversations with our friends at the county. But I, so I think we need to do that, and we need to do it now.
Okay. So, if the council's comfortable with that, I can work on a letter with Dave Taylor. I can circulate that for comments to the council. We could either bring that back to the next meeting, or if you're comfortable reviewing that between now and the next meeting, I'd be happy to schedule a meeting to meet with the commissioners, and I'll hand-deliver that letter and open, open the dialogue.
I'm in favor of the latter. I do have a question for, I guess it would be for Public Works. Craig, I think it was you that stated that the state was also looking at scoping the Second Street to Thirteenth Street section this year as a planning process. How would that play into this corridor plan?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, this year would really just be the preliminary stages of that scoping. I think that it would likely be a, probably a five-year construction window before we actually broke ground on any of that work. But, you know, that section of Highway 93 would, you know, clearly be part of this, the study, I would assume.
I mean, I understand we have our transportation plan, and we have a lot of the things in place for that, but seeing how that southern portion may develop into something maybe a little different, I don't know. It would be nice to make sure that we're, we're just not behind that portion.
Right.
Be nice to keep, keep in the know of when that's happening.
Further thoughts, direction? Are you guys comfortable with my proposal?
Yes.
John, I just think, I mean, it's important to find out if we can cooperate with the county so we can know truly what the scope of work on this is.
Exactly.
Proceed, so, yeah, I agree.
So, I'll work with you on that and try to get something pulled together by next week, if we can. Further comments on this line item? Not seeing any, we'll move on to communications from Craig Workman. A consideration of approving a contract for engineering design and construction management for the Central Avenue reconstruction project scheduled for FY17 and 18. Craig?
Thank you. That was actually a good segue into this project, as there are clearly, as Chuck mentioned, some TIF implications on this project as well. My staff report begins on page 509 of your packet. I'll kind of breeze through the first couple of pages because I'm sure it looks very familiar to you. This project, again, was part of the RFP that we did late last year. We did, at the last meeting, award contracts for the first three projects on that list: Flathead Avenue, the Greenwood to Columbia Avenue sewer, and the cast iron water mains. We're now looking at the contract for Central Avenue, and there's a couple of different aspects to this project, as well as a couple of different budget allocations for it. So, I'll kind of point you to the, I believe it's the second page of my memo where we look at the schedule. So, there's really a couple of main phases to this project. One is the water main replacement, which will be all the way from Third to Sixth Street. We'll also be looking at the next phase of the downtown shopping loop, which is from Third to Fourth Street. And then the third and final component of this is the infamous slump repair, which is essentially between Spokane and Fifth. And so, what we're looking to do in an effort to, you know, mitigate the downtown shopping season and still get this work done in the 2017 fiscal year or the 2017 calendar year, is begin now with the, essentially, the design development of that work between Third and Fourth Street. We'll also begin talking to the public about some of those slump repairs and the potential implications to Central Avenue as we fix that, and we'll be moving forward with the final stage of the water main design work. That water main was essentially designed to about ninety percent a couple of years ago, and then, and then stopped. And so, by awarding this contract back to WGM, they would pretty quickly be able to finalize those plans, submit them to DEQ, and hopefully get us out to bid so that we can start that water main construction at least south of Fourth Street this summer. So, if you look at the schedule, what we're looking to do with this contract, which is forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, is essentially get that first block of work done, where we'd be doing the design development between Third and Fourth Street. We'll be talking to those business owners and residents in that area, essentially finalizing the concept for that phase of the project. It will likely look very similar to the work on Central that we did between Railway and Third. We will be starting the outreach for, for those slump repairs and potential impacts to the southern part of Central Avenue, and we'll be finalizing the water main construction documents and getting those to DEQ. At that point, most likely in late March, I'd be coming back to talk about the next phase of work, which would essentially be going to bid on some of those projects. What we would look to do is hopefully begin construction on the water main south of Fourth Street this summer, and then, late summer after Labor Day, do that, that block between Third and Fourth so that we don't impact downtown shopping. So, looking at the financials on this project, we did budget this year under the Public Works Funds under Street and Water, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. As Chuck alluded to, we also have a potential kind of earmark for three hundred thousand dollars in future TIF funds, which would be that block between Third and Fourth Street that I would likely be coming to you in the fiscal 18 budget for an actual allocation for. This particular first phase of the project is a forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollar contract with WGM, and I've worded a motion on that last page that I recommend you guys pass.
Thanks, Craig. Any questions for Craig? Jen?
You noted on your schedule the phases for the various parts of the project. When you open up a block and do that reconstruction, are you closing it back up before you go on to the next phase so that only one block at a time is closed?
Yeah, that would be the intention.
Okay, thanks.
Motion?
One more question.
Jen?
Seeing how in the TIF budget, the three hundred thousand for the Central Avenue was not allocated for this year nor next year, I'm looking at the ending cash balance not equating to the three hundred thousand dollars. How do we get there?
Let me go back to that page.
It's page 506.
Page 506, thanks. Yeah, right now, we show an ending cash balance in fiscal 18 of six hundred and fifty-five thousand, six seventy-three, so this would likely take that down to about three fifty-five. Right, so, that's exactly it. I mean, you do have an ending cash balance next year, so it would likely be taking that down, this and any portion that you put towards a Highway 93 South corridor plan. So, it's, can be done.
Oh, I see.
But then you may just not be able to apply for the Baker Avenue viaduct pedestrian bike underpass.
I see. I was getting the column K and L.
Okay, right. Yeah, M is the next fiscal year, so you've got some flexibility there, but you can't do it all.
Yeah, thanks.
Motion? Jen?
I move to award a contract to WGM Group in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight to begin work on the Central Avenue reconstruction project in accordance with the scope of work included in this report.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign of the motion carries unanimously. Do you guys want a quick break, or do you want to keep chugging?
I'll take a quick break.
Quick break? Okay, we'll be back at nine oh five. Was it a field goal kick?
Yeah.
Awesome. Are we on, Jake?
We can.
Okay. We're back in session, and we left off with item 9A. You have Chuck's written report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Chuck from the council? I would just like to certainly thank Mike Firda for his service to the city of Whitefish, and also congratulations to Bridger, who will be our new Assistant Chief of Police. Congratulations to Bridger, and thanks to Mike for all his dedicated years to, to the city, and all the best in his retirement years. Item B, Chuck, any other items to report on between January 11th and January 7th?
Just.
Seventeenth, excuse me?
Just to let the council know, on a sort of trial basis, as you know, we started a live stream of the city council meeting on, over the internet tonight. It looks so far that it's successful. The picture quality and sound is good, so we'll probably sign up for the service, and then we can roll it out to the entire community next time, so people can watch on their computer on a live basis and/or their mobile device. So, so far, it looks successful, and we've had thirty-four views, but as I told Jake and Jen, a lot of those are me refreshing it, so. But I think we have.
So, two views?
No, I think we, I think we probably had somewhere maybe fifteen to twenty, but some of those people might have been refreshing it, so it could have been two people refreshing it a lot.
Thanks, Chuck.
We'll move on to item 9C, which will be our own Resolution 17-4, extending the corporate limits of the city of Whitefish, Montana to annex within the boundaries of the city approximately eighty-two point seven acres of wholly surrounded land on Ramsey Avenue and various other parcels, and this is on page 529 of your packet. Chuck?
Yeah, so, excuse me, it starts on page 529, and there are some maps with the resolution. My memo and staff report begins on page 545 of the packet. I'll try to do a condensed version, but if you want more, please ask questions, and I can follow it up. But we did go through this at length last, late last year, and then on December 5th, you decided to postpone it into January. So, it hasn't changed really since then. The council has held a couple executive sessions to talk about the potential of litigation on the matter, because in the packet, you have a letter from attorney representing Don Kay, thinking, or at least alleging that they have a legal case that they might prevail on a lawsuit against us. I think you've heard some possible contrary arguments to that, but anytime you get into court in front of a judge, judges often have their own opinions of interpreting law. So, this annexation would consider the annexation of forty-four properties, many of them on, in the Ramsey Avenue area, but also many of them throughout the community there. A few years ago, when we set priorities for annexation, Houston Drive was the top annexation effort at the time, then West Lake Shore, and followed by Ramsey, and we put all the other ones throughout the county, throughout the city, that we felt met the definition of wholly surrounded into one wholly surrounded annexation. Thirty-four of the properties to be annexed are taxable properties, and ten properties are tax exempt, of which six of those are either right-of-way or that were required to annex now because they're adjacent to our annexation, or MDT property, the Stormwater Detention Pond south. Detention Pond, south of the mall. We have an extension of services plan that's adopted, and it's featured, and a link to it's on our website. This memo goes into more detailed or microanalysis of the annexation for this particular area, whereas the extension of services is kind of a broad policy statement throughout the city. We are proposing this for wholly surrounded, based on Attorney General opinion, and also Supreme Court law in various cases, especially this Calvert case out of Great Falls, which is at least somewhat summarized on page 546. Then we have the schedule of the annexation, and then the report of extension of services, and our ability to provide services. We can provide services to all these property. There's really not much change. There's a little bit of a change in garbage services. They would now be required to mandatorily pay for garbage services, many of them, some of the people we've heard may haul their own garbage now, but they would have to start paying for it once they're in the city. But they'd have most of the other city services available to them, and, you know, would start paying for city taxes and the city services. You know, I think a big issue was that developed properties typically face a 16% to 28% increase in their property tax bill. Vacant properties, as you've seen, have some higher percentages, but often maybe more modest dollar amounts. But obviously, usually the opposition to annexation comes down to the financial impact of taxes on people. Of course, the city feels they would start paying for services that they already use, and they feel that they're already paying often too much in taxes, and prefer not to be annexed and left in the county. So, you did have a public hearing in December, and with that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Chuck. Any questions for Chuck on his staff report? Chuck, there was an executive session held the first meeting in January, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I was absent, for the record, from that meeting.
And they talked about many of the aspects of potential litigation. At the end, it seemed a consensus of the people in that meeting to go forward with the annexation as proposed, based on our discussion of the legal implications.
Okay. Jen?
Move to adopt Resolution 17-4, a resolution extending the corporate city limits of the city of Whitefish, Montana, to annex within the boundaries of the city approximately 82.7 acres of wholly surrounded land on Ramsey Avenue and various other parcels.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle? We will move on to item 9D, which is a consideration of the proposal we have in front of us from Mountain Berry Bowls LLC, for a lease of the west half of the parking structure, ground floor retail space, which wraps south onto Baker Avenue. Chuck?
My staff report begins on page 579 of the packet. I'll go through that in a minute, but in the audience are the proponents, and the proposal is in your packet, so they're available for questions or comments, as well as, I believe, their Realtor is here, and Chap Godsey, our Realtor, is also in the audience. Coming back to the staff report, just briefly, as you know, the council created 2824 square feet of space for retail, restaurant, possibly offices, in the parking structure at the corner of East First Street and Baker Avenue on the first floor. When the Pig and Olive proposal came forward, we reminded you of the downtown master plan, and how it wanted to activate that area, and create a linkage between the railway district and Central Avenue by creating a very active space. Earlier, you decided to capitalize three years of the lease revenue from this, and put it into the funding for the project. Therefore, we, based on that decision, we should try to get at least $54,000 per year from the leases to repay that capitalization loan. The marketing materials that Chap Godsey put together, and has been advertising, are in the packet, and it still is listed on MLS, as in order to generate some interest. On November 21st, you authorized me to negotiate a lease with Pig and Olive Sandwich Shop for the eastern half, and those discussions are ongoing. We're going to meet tomorrow and work on the lease as well. We have proposal from Mountain Berry Bowls, excuse me, owned by Jared and Lindley Lynch, and they're in the audience. The RFP that was put out by Chap and the city requested a minimum of $18 per square foot, and as you can see in the packet, the Mountain Berry Bowls proposal is for $16 a square foot. Met with them a few weeks, a couple weeks ago, and talked about whether or not they wanted to make any alternative or revised proposal. I think they're here to explain the $16 is where they wanted to stay on the proposal. They feel they're not going to put as, or the city's not going to have to put as many improvements into the retail, into the space, as we might for Pig and Olive, where since there will be like a kitchen hood that may get left when the applicants move out, the city may pay for some portion of that. That's still in negotiations. There was a thought that maybe we would counteroffer at $17.50 per square foot, and we could do that. I also laid out a concept in the staff report that, you know, maybe to get them started, we could start out $16 per square foot first year, go to $17 in year two, and $18 for years three to five. But, you know, we just need some direction from the council, whether you like their proposal as it is, or you want to direct me to counterpropose, and maybe give me some guidance on that. As we did with the Pig and Olive proposal, I tried to prepare some strengths and weaknesses of their proposal. You know, I can't, I don't have any pride of authorship here. There may be some other ones. You may disagree with some of those, or you may have some additional comments, but those are the ones that I could come up with and think of right away. So, we would get $22,592, well, approximately. Their proposal is really $16 per square foot. There have been some changes in the square footage, as the design of the two areas has become more certain. I think I put that map in the packet, so we'll look at that, and that gives kind of a breakdown of the two square footages as they stand right now, plus the common area of the bathrooms and a janitor closet, which they would share. There are some additional costs to finish out the leased space. We're still working on those cost estimates. Right now, I just have a cost estimate for the architectural and mechanical engineering design work of $10,000, just to finish out like the floor and the HVAC system, lighting and electrical, and plumbing and water with a concrete floor. And then, then most of the other improvements would be at the tenant improvements, and they'd have, you know, they'd have requirements if they want to put different flooring, a suspended ceiling, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm going to go down to their proposal. Here's all the marketing materials of the space. Their proposal's on page 589 of the packet, and then I did, this map on page 590 is the latest breakdown of the space. So, their space would be this 1129 square footage, but then they'd pay basically a prorated amount for the 384 square feet common area. So, it probably would approach, I'm just guessing, you know, 1,300 square feet instead of the 1420, 1424, whatever's half of the square footage. So, this is a better allocation of the square footage from the architect. So, it wouldn't be the 22,000, but it would be pretty close to that, based on $16 a square foot, and then a proportionate allocation of the square feet for the common area. So, I can answer any questions, and as I said, Jared and Lindley are in the audience, available for questions, and they may even, you may want to hear any elaboration that they want to give, and their Realtor is here, and our Realtor, Chap Godsey, is here.
Jen?
A quick question for the applicant. I'm wondering if you could speak to maybe your planned operating hours, if you would come up to the podium?
Hi, I'm Lindley Lynch. I, we do not have definite hours yet, but what we're thinking is around 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Seven days?
Seven days a week.
That was my question. Do any of you guys have questions for the applicant?
I have a question related to a potential counterproposal, if you don't mind. So, when we were dealing with some of the financial planning aspects of the parking structure, one decision the council made was we were going to capitalize on the lease revenue from this retail space to help make up some of the deficit that we were facing. And understanding those projections, we'd assumed an $18 per square foot, you know, triple net cost for three years to help recoup that deficit. Being partners in this project potentially, we certainly have every desire for you guys to succeed, because we like your business model, and you're locally owned and operated, and you're the type of business that we'd like to see occupy that space. If the council were to agree to a lower lease revenue for year one, and you demonstrated financial stability after that first year, would you be willing to increase that lease revenue to $17 for the second year, and $18 for the third year, in an effort to help the city, you know, recoup our commitment to making up that deficit?
I think we, that would be something my husband and I would have to talk about.
Of course.
But we are willing to negotiate. We are just taking into consideration that, you know, the minimal improvements that will need to be done to our space, and, you know, in five years, we're talking $14,000 that... Anyway, yeah, I think Jared and I would definitely be willing to negotiate with you guys, and...
Sure, and I'm certainly not asking you to make that decision here this evening, but as we kind of deliberate and come up with some potential scenarios, I just wanted to ask that question straight up, so we're not wasting your time or ours, for that matter.
Totally.
And just for the council's digestion, you know, at $18 a square foot, that total revenue over three years would be $72,000, or, excuse me, $76,248. Under the scenario I kind of proposed hypothetically, that would generate about $72,012, which is really only a difference of $4,236. So, just to put that as one option in perspective for you. Thanks for answering that. Are there any other questions, at least right now? Frank?
And I don't know whether you're prepared to say, to the extent you're going to make improvements to the facility over the basic finish out that we would do, is there any significant value to those improvements that you're talking about contributing to this facility?
The improvements that we are planning to make?
Yeah. Or are there any?
I guess it's just that we are not necessarily asking for improvements to be made by the city. I'm not sure if I'm...
Monty, feel free to, if you don't mind, just approach the, if you don't mind, just approach the podium, just so we can get you on record, please, for the listening audience.
I know this is difficult to conduct negotiations this way, but I just...
Yeah, that's the answer, is it's still to be negotiated. We're not quite sure what else would be included, and what all they would be responsible for. We don't really know yet.
Okay.
Yeah. But there would be value to anything they did that would be value to it.
Sure. Chuck?
Yeah, I mean, just from looking at the basic space, they're trying to think, okay, could we go with a concrete floor, and the metal ceiling that will be preexisting, that the city will put in, you know, since the floor's not in yet, we could polish it pretty easily. It could be a polished concrete floor, whereas other tenants, or even they may want to finish the floor. A lot of tenant improvements, when people move out, just end up getting left to us, and new tenants sometimes reuse them, and new tenants sometimes tear them out for their own looks. So, obviously, when people end a lease and move out, they do leave some things. We're probably going to leave these lights that we put in, in this tenant, because we don't have a great use for them in the new place. So anyways, that's just kind of part of it, but they're still talking about and deciding, you know, can they do, you know, are they, are they interested in just having it fairly sparse with the city improvements, and then improve it as they want to, knowing that if they end the lease, they might leave some things behind? But obviously, a five-year lease gives them a little bit more chance to amortize any of those costs, as it would anyone.
Chuck, your current negotiations with Pig and Olive, is that for a five-year lease?
I'm trying to remember.
To be determined.
Their proposal might have been three years. Some of it may depend on how much tenant improvements they end up doing.
Okay.
So, I can't remember their proposal. I have to look at it before we talk tomorrow, I mean, meet with them.
Katie?
It's my understanding that you will not be requesting a hood for your kitchen, correct?
That's right.
So, could you give me a basic rundown of what you're looking for in terms of kitchen equipment that you'll be using to operate?
What we will be providing, what we'll be bringing in?
Correct. Will you be using stove, grill, panini, any of that? Are you guys just running, running blenders and...
Yes, we will have, I mean, we have a pretty basic setup in our trailer right now, and so, blenders, we'll have, we just talked to the health department today, we'll have a stove, so that we can cook our own granola. It will be nothing that produces any grease, so we don't need anything to, you know, help with that, but mostly blenders. That's what we're going to be running most of the time, so...
Perfect. Thank you.
Thoughts, direction? Pam?
I'd like to go ahead and negotiate with them for a lease, hopefully with the graduated from 16 to 18 over the three-year period.
Jen?
I guess I wouldn't tie negotiations to a graduated lease. I think the closer we can get to 18, the sooner, the better. One thing I would make sure that we keep in mind as we negotiate with either tenant is hours of operation, and consistent hours of operation, as the primary goal here, is to activate that street front, and making sure that as we negotiate these leases, you know, the continued ongoing renewal of those leases, that's one of those aspects that we'll look at, is performance, and how much of your day you're open, how much you're activating those streets. those streets and those sidewalks. So with that, I would support negotiations. The one question I have for Chuck is, do we get to see the final lease and approve, or is that up to you?
No, you do. State law requires you actually approve any lease by, I think, a two-thirds vote, so it comes back to you in a resolution when it's, when it's ready.
Great. That's what I'll be looking for then, is closer to 18, the sooner the better, and making sure we commit to consistent and continuous hours.
Further discussion, comments, direction? Frank?
Only other thoughts, Chuck, is I think the, one of the things is, as we walk through this with them and negotiate, I mean, it will be important for us to understand and to have very specific, concrete ideas about what finish is expected from us, what's finished is going to be provided by them, and the value of those improvements and how they will contribute or support that facility. And certainly, and this would be obvious, I think, in any lease, but no tenant improvements without landlord approval. Just...
Is everyone comfortable with, with the direction provided? Chuck, are you comfortable with that direction?
Yeah, I was trying to remember, was Pam's a motion or...
It more or less was. I mean, unless you need a formal motion, we could just do a simple show of hands or...
Well, I mean, I can, I can live with either. I can go off of the sort of direction and comments made and, you know, negotiate the best deal I can. If you want it to be more concrete or more specific, then you would pass a motion.
What's the council's prerogative?
I'm good with directions.
Directions, fine. Show of hands to Pam's direction she provided? I think you have it, Chuck. If you get in any gray area, of course, just bring it back to the council, you know, for discussion, if you need any feedback from us before moving forward. Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming. We will move on to our revised personnel policy. Hi, Sherri. Which will be Resolution 17-5, adopting the revised personnel policy. Thanks, Monty. Thanks, Chap.
Good evening. You received my staff report in the agenda packet. Basically, just to synopsize, we were required to update our personnel policy to bring it in line in compliance with the current federal and state laws, regulations. I listed out the major changes that we made, which were the equal employment opportunity policy, the Americans with Disabilities Act, alcohol and drug-free workplace policy, harassment at M L A and the military leave. We did a 30-day comment period with city staff, department directors, and the three unions. We received no comments from the unions. We received two staff comments, which two were just editorial items, which we corrected for your copy. And the other one is an item that we'll bring up in our next round of changes for our bereavement policy. So you have everything that's been updated to date. We just respectfully request that you approve the policy update. And I have to thank Chuck and Angie for all of their help. They did, Angie did a lot of it, and Kenny also did a tremendous amount of editing with me, so I really appreciate their help.
Thanks, Sherri. Any questions for Sherri on the personnel policy? Or can I have a motion, please? Frank?
I'll move to adopt Resolution 1705, a resolution adopting revised personnel policy.
A second.
Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, and that's unanimous, Michelle? Thanks, Sherri.
Thank you.
Move on to Resolution 17606, a resolution approving the terms of a First Amendment to a hiking trail easement agreement with the Iron Horse Homeowners Association and abandoning two existing hiking trail easements. And this is on page 720 of your packet. Good evening, Angie.
Good evening, council members and mayor. So I am happy to report that we have yet another segment to fulfill the Whitefish Neighborhood Plan's vision of a trail system surrounding Whitefish. As a little bit of background, my report starts on page 736. In 1999, Iron Horse Homeowners Association's predecessors and interests granted the city a perpetual 15-foot easement over their property for use as a public hiking trail. The permitted, it was an actual executed document that was recorded, the permitted uses of the trail were hiking, running cross-country skiing, snowshoeing and biking, motorized vehicles, horses, llamas, and other livestock were not permitted on the trail. It was known as the Iron Horse Trail, and it was shown on certificate of survey number 13988. The following year, the city approved the final plat of Iron Horse Phase Four, and the final plat depicts a 15-foot hiking trail easement running across the eastern perimeter of the subdivision. Hiking trail was never actually constructed or developed, developed on that easement. A year ago, we approved the Haskell Basin and Watersheadated Conservation Easement, covering approximately a little bit over 3,000 acres of land in Haskell Basin, which is owned by Fitzstoltz Land and Lumber. And in conjunction with the easement, we also approved a public recreational trail easement in which Stoltz granted the city an easement over its property for construction of a segment of the Whitefish Trail. During the process of negotiating with Stoltz, we approached Iron Horse about the possibility of relocating the easement on their property so we can better align with the planned easement hiking trail that's going to be in Stoltz's property. They agreed to relocate the easement. We entered into a letter of intent with them, and in that letter of intent, we agreed to abandon any and all right we may have in the hiking trail easement that's shown on the plat of Iron Horse but has never been developed as such. So about over the course of the last six months, we have negotiated a amendment to the original hiking trail easement, which align, in which Iron Horse agrees to grant us an easement that's just going to better align with what we're planning on in, on Stoltz's property. It contains the same prohibitions as in the original hiking trail easement, which is basically no horses, livestock, llamas, anything like that. It also states that we're going to abandon, as we agreed to do in the letter of intent, the hiking trail easement that's shown on the plat. We're also going to abandon our current hiking trail easement, provided however that Iron Horse has given us a license to use the existing hiking trail until we open the new, newly constructed hiking trail or two years, whichever is earlier. And my conversations with legacy partners are they plan on building that trail starting in 2007, so we don't think that we're going to run up any sort of time limitations, but the license does, you know, protect public access. My understanding is the public doesn't usually use that hiking trail, but it does protect public access until we can get the new easement constructed. So there's no financial requirements or impacts. As you know, under our MOU with legacy partners, they build the trail and maintain the trail. So we, or I respectfully request that you approve Resolution Number 17, and I'm not sure what the number is.
Six.
Six.
Thanks, Angie.
Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions, comments? Frank?
Just a couple random ones. Did you say that the existing trail, existing trail easement is not built, so there is no trail there?
There is no trail on the hiking trail easement that is shown on the plat. My understanding is the existing hiking trail easement runs over their roads.
It's on an unimproved forest road, so that's the line in purple. And so when we negotiated the revised trail easement with Iron Horse, which is shown in yellow, it provides an improved trail experience. It allows us to build a trail system that's consistent with the other trails within the Whitefish Trail system.
Great.
So the, the actual easement that was part of their final plat is not shown on this map, but it runs, as Angie stated, on the eastern boundary of the Iron Horse subdivision.
Okay.
And it was never built.
Okay. So the purple line is the actual old road that's there that is currently being used.
That we're abandoning as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
So whose responsibility will it be to close off that access, given that the trail crosses that old road? Who is going to make the improvements to make it appear as though that is no longer an access point? Is that our responsibility, or is that their responsibility?
Well, there's, there's really no appearance of an access point now, because that links down to the city's property at the water treatment plant, but it'll be the responsibility of Whitefish Legacy Partners in conjunction with the city regarding planning to build, you know, the trailhead as well as the trail system. And where it does cross the existing road, that will be the responsibility of legacy partners to deal with.
And to sign appropriately.
Correct.
And generally...
If that's correct, Maria? Yeah? Okay.
And we generally handle signage pursuant to an operations agreement, so...
I will say that we've made a lot of progress, you know, the city in terms of, you know, planning and coordinating with legacy partners, and thanks for that, Maria. And we've also made a lot of progress with fundraising. We did secure the $200,000 in, in funding through grants this past year and then through various fundraising events that we've held, in particular, wanted Iron Horse. We had a, some fairly, you know, sizable donations that did come in, so I think we're looking now within about $50,000 to $60,000 of our, of reaching our total fundraising goal to make this whole project a reality. So we're hoping to complete it all in 2017, but in the event we don't, we can carry that over into 2018. Is that your understanding too? Okay. Angie?
The only other thing I'd add is that we are, at least Whitefish Legacy Partners, with my help in drafting, are working on negotiating an easement with W S I that will connect on the other side of Stoltz to, you know, continue to work on the loop.
John? Katie?
I would move to approve Resolution 17-06, a resolution approving the terms of the First Amendment to a hiking trail easement agreement with Iron Horse Homeowners Association Incorporated and abandoning two existing hiking trail easements. Second?
Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion carries unanimously. Michelle? Thanks, Angie. Thanks, Maria. Move on to our own communications. We have a letter from the Flathead Conservation District requesting that we reappoint John Ellis for his second three-year term. And apparently, Kamisha Sawtelle is not seeking reappointment, so the Conservation District is requesting that we also appoint Lori Curtis of Whitefish for the second vacancy. And these appointments are made according to Montana statute, so it is our authority to make these appointments this evening. And I'll note that John's in the audience and just want to thank John for his tenure on the Conservation District. I think he's doing a great job. I've had to work with him, actually, on a few 310 site reviews, and he's done a great job. So with that said, can we have a motion?
I'll move to reappoint John Ellis to the Flathead Conservation District and also appoint Lori Curtis to the Flathead Conservation District.
Is there a second to the motion?
John, they, the council appointed Lori Curtis at the last meeting.
Oh, they did?
January 3rd.
Okay.
So tonight is just John Ellis.
Okay.
I'll restate that. I'll move to reappoint John Ellis to the Flathead Conservation District.
I'll second.
Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that's unanimous. Michelle? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Received numerous dozens of letters and emails addressed to all of us regarding our proclamation rejecting racism and bigotry, promoting tolerance and nondiscrimination. Any comments tonight? Michelle? Oh, I'll go back to item B. Sorry, I jumped down to C.
Sorry.
No comments on the letters? Okay. Frank?
John, I'd just say that I'm, I'm very heartened that we got so many letters of support and that it again demonstrates, once again, how important this community is and how important community action is to putting an end to racism, bigotry, and discrimination. It's just, it's again very heartening for all of us, I think.
Thanks, Frank. We'll move back to item 11B. We didn't make any appointments to volunteer boards. I kind of asked the question of whether or not the council would be interested in expanding the number of members on this committee. You indicated yes, as did Steve Thompson, so I'm going to predicate this motion, which will need to be ratified by the council. Angie, we'd like to, if you have time for the next meeting, the resolution forming the Climate Action Committee was Resolution 16-64. And if we could have a slight change to the makeup of this committee, which is in Section 4 of that resolution, we would need to have the revised resolution reflect that the committee will consist of nine individuals with representation as follows, one city councillor, and eight individuals. And then the remaining text remains the same. I'd just like to see a show of hands if the council's comfortable having that resolution come back on our next agenda reflecting those changes? Okay. With that said, we had an incredible pool of applicants, and I think I'm making the right decision, but I think we've accommodated all of the, at least in my opinion, what will be a very broad committee that brings a variety of different talents to this committee and also has experience that'll help us, you know, hopefully, you know, expedite the completion and adoption of this plan, which I think is important for our community. So with that said, I would appoint and request your ratification tonight for Mike Copel, Ciara McCartney, Robin Kelson, Ryan Richardson, Ruth Ann Coffey, Jeff Arsell. And then pending the revised adoption of Resolution 16-64 at the next meeting, I would then like to fill those two positions by, or with Ryder Delaloy and Nancy Woodruff. And then my council appointment, and I've discussed this with, with Richard and Pam, would be Richard Hildner, considering Pam sits on the advisory committee to the Climate Smart Partnership. And that will require ratification from the council.
So moved?
Is there a second?
I would, I would certainly second that, John. Is there a way that would make sense for us, given Nancy's commitment to that committee, to make Jody, for example, Jody Pedlin, an alternative, an alternate to...
Sure. Yeah, I think that'd be great. And have the resolution reflect the option for one alternate, please, Angie? That's a great, great suggestion.
And I would move that we approve her as that. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion? Everyone clear with the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and we have a Whitefish Climate Action Plan Committee. Thanks, Pam, and thanks, Richard, for moving this forward for Whitefish. I think it's important. We also received letters regarding the proposed march on January 16th. Any comments related to those letters and emails? We also received a resolution of support from the city and citizens of Whitefish from the Great Falls City Commission, I believe. When I was out of town, Richard contacted the mayor in Great Falls. Is that correct?
I did, Mr. Mayor, and I might suggest that maybe we send a letter of thanks on Whitefish Letterhead, perhaps signed by you and the rest of the council.
It's in the hopper.
Great, thank you.
As soon as that's prepared. Chuck and I have been working on that. We'll get it circulated, perhaps just at the next meeting, since we'll all be here and we'll get that signed and, and out the door. But thanks for reaching out to the mayor of Great Falls and thank you to the city of Great Falls for their support. On that note, we'll start with councillor comments. Richard, how was your evening?
I'm sorry, I'm a little late. Well, no, I'm not sorry I'm late getting back at all. I, I had a wonderful experience down in Kalispell, representing the city. It was a great honor to represent the city in the receipt of the Peacemaker of the Year Award that was donated, or was awarded by Love Lives Here in the Mennonite Church for our actions, and as you did last night, Mr. Mayor, and as I did tonight, I mentioned that it was really not an award to the Whitefish City Council, but really a, an award to all of the citizens of Whitefish and the Flathead Valley. And Jake, if you're ready for this, I was able to abscond, no, they gave me the quilt And you'll note that there are three squares. This is the fourth year this has been given. We have the privilege of designing a four-by-four square. The Mennonite Church has a quilting guild that will make a four-by-four square based on our design, and place it on this quilt for the next recipient. I mentioned to them that it would be a great honor for us to be able to keep this quilt for a time in our new city hall, as to honor all of the citizens of Whitefish.
Good work, Richard. And thank you.
And I'm glad I got back in time.
Any other comments? Volunteer board reports?
I have to admit that I was absent from the last biking event meeting. Sorry.
Pam?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Katie?
Friendly reminder, there will be a, a nine-on-one interlocal agreement meeting on the fifth Monday of this month, as was lined out in Chuck's manager report. It will be held in Columbia Falls, and I do believe the starting time is six-thirty, although I will send an email out to everyone. We will be discussing the interlocal agreement.
Thanks, Katie. Jen?
My condolences to the fire department for their loss to the city, and Ben Parsons' family and friends, but also my sincere congratulations and, and support of thanks to the police department for fielding all of the concerns and making sure that we would be prepared for the worst if it were to happen over the last month. So thank you sincerely to the police department, all of the city staff, and all of the citizens who have been involved in making sure that we are all vigilant and safe.
Thanks, Jen. Frank?
Can I add anything more to that? Thank you.
Andy?
Nothing.
I just have a couple things. I'm going to be attending the Chambers Annual Strategic Planning Meeting for just a little bit in the morning tomorrow. I can provide an update at the next meeting. I think Katie's going to join me at that meeting. I think I'll be joining Maria next Tuesday for a discussion on AIS program for two thousand and seventeen, so I look forward to that meeting, and I believe that's it. And anything further from staff or council? We're adjourned.